Hi, everybody. Good evening. It is March 11th. This is the town of Rhinebeck regular town board meeting. Would everybody please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I have a motion to approve our prior minutes of February 25th for our regular town board meeting?
Motion.
Thanks, Chauncey Walker. Second, thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion? Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'm gonna have a couple of announcements. We received, I think, just over the weekend, the study from Brockport on the shared services for the town and village highways. It was pretty meaty, so I'm gonna delve into it and read it, and I'm sure you guys will do the same. We can discuss where we want to go from there. It seemed like a lot of money needed to be spent to get some things done, but I'm thinking we should read it and then come up with some ideas of where to go and meet with the village. Also, our zoning review group is back together. I've gotten a lot of questions about this, so I'll write about it and post it. But the zoning review group is a group consisting of myself and Chauncey Walker on the town board, Melody Moore and Michael Trimble from the planning board, Kathy Hammer from the historic preservation board and planning board, Katherine Clark and Tim Allenbrook from the zoning board appeals, Michelle Turek, our zoning administrator, and Jim Levy, our town planner. And we will be needing to look at necessary changes to our zoning code. We have a long list of it, and I'll publish all of that. It's not a... There is no quorum of any statutory board, but we're going to make sure the public knows when we're meeting and welcome them to come and listen while we work. Got a lot of comments on the state police proposal for donation of town land to build barracks, all favorable, and a lot of comments on wireless edge, not so favorable. So with that, let's segue into a presentation from Captain Harold Lutardo, who's an administrative captain with the state police, and he's here with Council Amanda Cox, and they're here to publicly discuss what they're looking to do on a piece of town land that was given to us years ago in lieu of recreation fees. It's a six-acre parcel on the corner of Route 9G and Primrose Hill. The state police is asking for about three acres of that. So Captain Lutardo, please come on up.
Good evening. My name is Harold Lutardo, and I'm a New York State Police Captain, assigned to Administration at a Division Headquarters in Orleans. Our agency has started an initiative to operate a number of stations across the state in need of replacement. SP Rhinebeck and Troop K Zone 1 has been identified as such. The state police has conducted law enforcement operations from the current facility on Route 9 South for over 50 years. During this time, our needs to include technology have changed. We have outgrown sight and are looking to optimize our space so that we can effectively meet the needs of the public and our members. The state police is seeking to construct a larger, more modern, purpose-built law enforcement facility in Rhinebeck that can better meet those needs in terms of parking, building access, and efficiency of operations. The future barracks would be one-story slab-on-grade and approximately 6,000 square feet. We are requesting the town consider the donation of at least three acres of land to our agency for this purpose. After meeting with town representatives as well as local state police personnel on February 19, 2019, it was determined the parcel located on the southwest corner of Route 9G and Primrose Hill Road may suit both the town and state police best for this initiative. If a resolution is passed this evening, we can begin the required survey work and wetland as well as archaeological analysis of the property before seeking appropriate legislative changes to transfer it. Any questions?
Thank you. Town board members, any questions? Questions or comments from anyone in the public? Before I ask our attorney to weigh in, I just want to say that we did get a lot of favorable responses from my newsletter that I put out of people, as do we. We feel fortunate to have your presence here and wanted to... We want to keep it here. You're good for our community, so thank you for that. One comment that I did get that I brought up with you, which was a concern of mine and a concern of several residents, is that the state police consider... Let me just see if I can get the wording here well. That the building be as green and sustainable as possible. And there are Green Building Construction Acts and some New York State Dormitory Authority guidelines on green building. I don't know, though, what the minimum square footage is this building may be. It's too small for that, but that's something we'd like to look into, and we'd like to work with you to ensure that in terms of energy, whether it's geothermal, solar, pervious pavement, and indigenous plantings, that it be as carbon neutral and as efficient as possible. So we would pledge to work with you on that, and we hope that you would, too.
Right, and we could have those discussions. We've had, just to put it out there, we've had Pervious Pavement Act facilities, and it is kind of high maintenance for us, but other things we can definitely talk about.
Great. Warren, do you want to weigh in on this? We don't have a resolution. I don't know what we need to do to, you know, come to some kind of consensus or have a consensus that says, yes, we do want to move forward with this. So, I mean, I know that this is parkland that was donated to us years ago in lieu of recreation fees, I think for development in the '70s, but... And Captain Lutardo has said that he's familiar with the process of going to the state legislature for their approval. They have to sign off on any of this, but do you want to talk to us about this?
Yeah, I mean, maybe you could explain the process. I'm familiar with the process of legislative approval for the alienation of parkland, but I'm not familiar with the process for getting state legislation to allow a town to gift property even to the state police.
Amanda, could you come up?
So do you raise your question about, does it would be the parkland or just any...
No, I didn't know that this... Is this being used as parkland or was it donated to the town for parkland?
No, it was donated to the town in lieu of recreation fees.
Recreation?
Back when we took the donations. You know, we have odd parcels all over the town.
All right, so assuming that it's not town parkland, where it hasn't been donated to the town for express purpose of being used as parkland.
It was donated in lieu of recreation fees.
So we have to check that. Then we would have... Then we don't have to go through an alienation process for... To convert parkland to someone to use.
Right.
But the process of getting legislative approval at the state level for us to give, because we're prohibited by the Constitution to gift property of the town, and is that what you're talking about, getting legislative authority to override that?
So the legislative approval is just... We're parkland.
It's not parkland, apparently.
Which is good, good news. So we think the process is much simpler, and we've gone forward in other towns doing the same process, and no legislation is required but for those places where parkland is involved.
Right, I've handled a couple of those, and I'm in the process of handling another. But so let's put that aside for the moment. How do we get over the problem of donating this property to the New York State Police, where we're prohibited from doing that by the New York State Constitution?
Yeah, I mean, I would have to look, because we're doing it in the town of Chatham currently, so I can look to see...
Yeah, we need to get the... We need to find out what...
And I would say, too, the legislation in the other areas where it is parkland, it's not contemplating the constitutional prohibition, so there's definitely a procedure, and I can find out what that is.
Okay, if you can find that out.
Working closely with the town of Chatham attorney, and I'm sure he's got that laid out.
Yeah, if you could get back to me on that.
Sure.
So I'd like to have that information, so I know exactly what the process is, what we have to do. And I'm not disagreeing with you, but I've never handled one of those before.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
So we have to overcome that. There has to be an environmental review. I guess we're gonna have to do that before we pass any resolutions. And so we have to get more information regarding the plans that you have for the facility to help, you know... Do you have any conceptual plans in terms of the size of the facility?
We do, and, you know, I don't want to get ahead of myself. And the reason I say, you know, initially, we do all these, we do the survey, the archaeological, and we do wetland plan analysis, because we run into roadblocks and other places where, you know, you have a piece of land, and I don't want to get too far into, let's work on transferring the land, and then we find out later that it's not really useful for us, so...
So shouldn't you do that due diligence before?
We are, and that's what kind of I'm asking to do before any transfer of land.
Okay, yeah.
But as far as plans, yes, we do have plans. We're really close in Chatham, as I mentioned, so, you know, to the extent that we can give you the interior of our, you know, our actual plans with where things are located inside the station, we don't release those, but we can give you, you know...
And you have given us schematics, elevations, exterior...
Right, exterior, right. But I kind of feel like I know where you're going with, you know, where septic data, utilities, all those kinds of things.
Well, we just have... We have to do... I don't think it's exempt from Seeker, so we're... I'm assuming you're one of those, maybe Seeker. So we have to have enough information to fill out a... I have to decide whether it's a type one or an enlisted action.
And it has to go through SHPO, too, because it's a state building? It has to go through SHPO approval?
I don't think so.
Yes, because it's a state building. I think so.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll see. I mean, I've never, to be honest, in all the years I've done municipal law, I've never been involved in a transfer of town property to another state entity, so I don't know. It could be a SHPO who passed the way in, I don't know. That might be part of our environmental review. I'm not anticipating that there'll be a big problem with the environmental review, but we do have to go through that, otherwise whatever action we take is null and void. We have to comply with Seeker. So at some point, I'm gonna need some more information so we could do an environmental assessment form to start that process. So I don't know... I mean, we don't have any resolution. I mean, the only thing we could do at the next meeting, depending on you giving me information about how legally this can move forward, we could, you know, we can give you a conceptual resolution that we're willing to move forward with the project, but we can't formally approve the project till, you know, we complete all the requirements, and it's probably gonna require a public hearing, but I'll check on the law on that, so...
Are you gonna go ahead and do the surveys and the soil analysis now, or are you gonna wait for us to resolve somewhere?
Well, we need, obviously, your approval to go on the property and do that, right?
Is there anything we can do tonight, Warren, that's a consensus to allow, you know, things to go forward?
Yeah, we could do a resolution conceptually that we're in favor of moving forward with the project, subject to a formal resolution of the legal issues and a resolution by the town board, so that... And give you access to the property for purposes of doing your due diligence. That's... I don't have any problem with that.
Do you want to make a motion from the floor?
Yes. Give me the words.
Is that what you need from us, some kind of authorization?
It is, and just sort of everyone's understanding. You know, I'm not looking to move on this tomorrow either. You know, I kind of have quite the number ball in the air, so...
Well, our next meeting, yes.
So if time is not of the essence, I would just assume have a written formal resolution that we could have maybe for the next meeting.
At our March 25th meeting.
Unless you tell me that you need to move forward with this fairly quickly. If you could send me what you've done in Chatham, that would be helpful for me to see what... How the process works in Chatham. I'll give you my cards.
Yeah, and we'll work through email and get it on our next agenda. We probably don't have to come down for the next meeting. We can pass that. What? No, sorry.
It's a nice drive.
Yeah, all right, if you want to come, we'd love to have you. But Sergeant Donis here, Sergeant, did you want to say anything in support of this, or...
I just wanted to say that it's a long time overdue, and my fault, I worked at the state police barracks back in the '70s, and, you know, in close working relationship with them, it's a long time overdue. They need a station, and they need to move forward with it. And the town could do the helping degree.
Thanks.
And we were close to with them, and we enjoy working with them.
Thanks.
Sounds good.
What's gonna happen to the old spot?
The state police still...
We don't know.
I read that.
It was built for us, I guess, 54 years ago.
Wasn't there an issue of a tank on that issue, an underground tank or something?
Oh, I don't know. I'm not sure.
It's a good number for St. Side of...
There may have been.
Well, thank you. Thanks for coming, and we'll get this on for our next meeting agenda. I'm sure Warren will be emailing with Amanda to get all the links. Thanks, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another very brief presentation from our assessors on the update on the reassessment, townwide reassessment reevaluation. We have Matt Savia, our assessor, and Steve Bessia, the project manager for Tyler Technologies. Hi, guys.
Hello. Hi, my name's Matt. I'm gonna leave the post of the presentation to Steve since he is heading the reassessment project with Tyler, so... Any questions, though, feel free to answer and ask me, so...
Okay, so where are we? We've just mailed in the village the property description reports. We're gonna hold off on the town. It's primarily a problem of data entry for us, but I expect that within two months, we should be able to mail the property description reports into town. I mean, at this stage, I already have preliminary neighborhoods in the village and preliminary land values for those neighborhoods in the village. Theoretically, within a month, we could do valuation in the village if we had to. That's pretty much...
And the property description cards are the cards to which our residents respond to make sure that the data is correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we're on task, on budget, on...
Pretty much. I mean, we have lost time because of weather here.
Yeah, well, it's wonderful. Thanks. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I just want to do a deadline date.
Excuse me?
Deadline date, right? Should be all...
It's been published.
Well, we have a deadline, but we have to. These are statutory deadlines. We can never extend deadlines.
We have to get this out for our 2020...
May 1st.
Yeah.
Yeah.
May 1st, next week.
Correct. 2020.
And we're on track for that.
Yes.
So that everything's sort of set before grievance period, and, you know, people can come and grieve it, and then the tax rolls go out for 2021. It's the same schedule we've been publicizing to everybody. So thank you. Anybody else have questions? Comments? Thanks for updating us.
Okay.
Bye, guys.
Bye.
Warren, you're here for a resolution... Let's make a motion for a resolution, 2019-082, its item tab number 15, accepting the amended proposed local law to be determined in the year of 2019, entitled "A Local Law Amending Town Code, Chapter 125, Zoning, in the Matter of Establishing a Workforce Housing District as a Voting District, Providing a Procedure for Locating a Workforce Housing District, and Setting Forward Regulations for Development Therein." May I have a motion? Alan, thank you. May I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Ed. Warren, you want to...
Yeah, so basically what I did was I made a couple tweaks to the zoning law in response to county planning's recommendation, and we had gotten some in part from our broad. And then when I reread the county planning recommendation, I felt that maybe I needed to take a closer look at what we were gonna do, because we didn't address a couple of issues that they had wanted, one or suggested we addressed. One I could discuss with you tonight. We have a maximum number of dwelling units that would be permitted in this zone.
What is it?
Part 80. And in place of this, they recommended that we consider using the proportional density standard outlined in the district schedule of uses... I'm sorry, district scheduled area and bulk regulations for the underlying village gateway, which would be one dwelling unit per 6,000 square feet, and they felt that would allow flexibility of design and density. I think the board was... The committee that worked on this was pretty committed to having an offset number of 80 units, so I just wanted to run that past you to see if we adopted something like this, it could exceed 80 units. And what they're suggesting is that it gives us more flexibility. I don't know that there would be a lot of support in the committee, but I think we spent a lot of time on putting a cap on the 80 units. But if that's something you'd like to consider, I could easily tweak the law to provide the maximum density would be set by the board when it considers the rezoning, using the one dwelling unit per 6,000 square feet as a guideline without imposing any upward limit on it, and that would be a rezoning issue that the town could decide.
What do you guys think?
Do you have a recommendation about Warren?
What I'd like to do, if you don't mind, is just run this past a couple of members of the committee to see how they would feel if we changed it. So I just wanted to run that past you.
And have we gotten the final tweaks from Michael Trimble?
Well, let me finish this, not all. So if we can hold off, I'm gonna see whether we want to make that change. The other recommendation that they made was there was a provision in there for requirement of open space. Now, open space is not usually imposed in an overlay rezoning like this. We don't have an open space requirement for the senior citizens overlay, but our... We had recommended that we put that in, and he had at least a minute, a minimum of one half acre, and provided the standard of 2,000 square foot per dwelling unit, whichever is greater. I'm thinking about the...
2,000 square feet? How about 500?
Yeah, I changed it to 500 based upon recommendation of our broad when he saw that. But then I was thinking about this, and I'm thinking, I'm not sure why we don't just have a provision in the law requiring as part of the rezoning that there be open space, but that the open space be determined in the discretion of the town board based upon several factors. I think that's a much better way.
Took out four and a half acres then for 80 units.
The planning board felt that was... What we had was too much. I would just rather have it in there as a requirement, that the town board would set that and give some standards and criteria for setting the open space without tying it into a number of...
By open space, do you mean passive recreation, just...
No, it would be space that's, you know, not used for anything.
Okay.
And it could be a waste of open space, depending on what the project is. So I'm thinking, rather than impose that requirement, I think we should have more flexibility, but with the understanding that there will be an open space requirement but be imposed by the town board. So if you're in agreement with that, and I'll run it past the committee also, I'd like to tweak the law to provide for that.
But see what the committee says, I think.
And I changed a couple of other things in the law that were recommended by the county of Dutchess. So I'll have that for you by your next meeting.
Everybody's in agreement, we want to see what the committee says.
Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
I think we've reached an accord with the planning board on their issues. I'm not gonna go into detail about it, but I think that they're... I met with representative of the planning board, Michael Trimble, and with our new planner, and I think that they are okay.
Great.
Not thrilled with the idea of moving forward with the project as is, without making the changes to consider it on a townwide basis, which really would take much too much effort and time, and I think would be unproductive. And so I'm hoping that they're okay with that. I don't think they'll change their recommendation, but I think we've lowered the temperature on the issues.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you for doing that.
I don't see anybody here tonight, so I'm hoping that's okay. So if it's okay with you, I'll work on this, and I'll have this for your next meeting. And then the revised law will be on your desks and published in a sufficient amount of time, so for the next public hearing, which I think is April 11th, something like that.
Eight, I think. You say eight? Eight a month?
Eight.
I think we continue to hear TV8.
The eight, whatever that... Well, you'll have it in sufficient time.
Does that give us enough time? Is there enough days if we lay it down on the 25th or the...
Is that our next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
John, can you add this to the agenda then for our 25th meeting? John?
Yeah, he's doing it.
If I have it for you by the next meeting, which is, what, March 25th?
Yes, but we want it in advance.
Would that be enough to publish 10 days in advance of the public hearing on the 8th?
I'm looking.
I think so. Very close.
I mean, there's 31 days.
I thought I had to lay the desk full of five days.
Yes, there's 10 working days, it'll be fine.
I like to do 10 working days for a zoning amendment.
They... You can... Even if it's not 10 days, they could have the public hearing on the 8th, and then they could vote on it at the next meeting.
We could hold the public hearing.
Yeah, if they don't... Yeah, but what do we use them? Kipsey Journal is our...
No, the Daily Freeman. But Warren, we'd like...
And that's a daily paper. That's a daily... So we can get in right away, right? That we don't have to...
Warren, we'd like this from you no later than the 20th, so that it could go out to the public. I don't want last-minute changes.
I'll have it for you probably early next week.
Thank you. Thanks. Anything else for Warren, anybody?
That's it.
Anything else for us?
That's it.
Thanks for coming.
See you later.
Talk to you later. Skipping out of order here tonight, tab 14, please, we have...
Is this yours?
John, is your question... Is this resolution in table?
Table. It's going back on our next... Our next agenda for the 25th. We have Thomas Bycard here tonight, who is a Eagle Scout, and he is requesting that we... An application for a sign permit, so Resolution 2019-081, may I have a motion?
May I motion?
Thank you. Ed, may I have a second?
Sure.
Who's that getting, Chauncey? Thanks. So now it's on the floor, we can discuss it. Thanks for coming, Thomas.
Hello. Tom, I'm from 228 Rhinebeck. And if you flip to your second page, you can see the signs that are standing today.
Yeah.
They have cheerleading, pass, readability for some of them, and there are three options for the new signs.
I'm sorry, Thomas, can you tell us just for the record where the signs are right now?
Can't.
Yeah, one's on 199, right?
It's actually on this letter.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to trip you up.
No, that's okay.
So one's on Route 308 in Rock City Road. It's a little... Just like a...
Oh, right. Do you guys have the survey we provided?
I'm looking, I'm looking. Ah, yes!
Yeah, we did a mapping.
Yes, you did.
An overhead map, and then photos of all the existing signs and their location as part of the application.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
Yeah, there's four. Each map, each location is mapped with... A little hard to see in black and white, I think, but...
Is it the...
Yeah, so... And it's a brief summary of what it... You know, the condition, and then there's a photo that kind of shows you the distance from the road.
So it's three signs, it's...
Four, four different signs.
One is 308 Old Rock City, two is Route 9 between the Quipman House and Stone Church, and then three is Route 9G near 199 and 9G, and four is... Gosh, these are in bad shape. About near Countryside Animal House.
Correct.
Thank you, yeah.
These signs were redone twice, each by Eagle Scouts. One passed one was in 2006, 2007, and the other person did not, no.
Do you know when the last time they were done?
2006, 2007.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've gotten...
Is it gonna last longer, once you do it?
Yes.
Yes, we've got some materials. Technology has changed, and...
So for the big part, this is the color, but this is just a sample of the size because of the...
You mean the...
How thick, thickness. So since it's going to be a bigger sign, we're going to do it in a thicker, but this will be the same color.
What is this material?
It's an aluminum composite material, it's called Omega Board.
Is this exterior standard?
Yeah, that's basically the side buildings with it, and even modern buildings that you see that have metal-wrapped panels. It's the same type of product, but it's used for the sign industry. This is the town seal, that, the shield, that shield.
So just so you know, we had a graphic designer re-render this shield and the seal, and it exists digitally and can be sized to any size without losing any quality, resolution. So we will put you in touch with that person who will work with you to give you whatever...
John actually sent that to me.
This is the...
Great, oh, great.
That's the most, that's the most...
Yeah.
...idea, recreating it.
We've done it.
We've done it.
Someone has one step ahead of, as usual.
Was that your mother?
Yes.
Yes, of course.
Hey, Tom, then just let them know, this will be mounted on to this size, this thickness, so it has some dimension.
Is it done, is it like a sort of a car applique, or you've got it done?
It's like a vinyl, kind of like sticker.
Yeah, like what goes on on wheels then?
Great, I can't...
Great.
So if it wears out, it could be replaced, just one thing.
Correct, yeah.
Wow!
It'll be all component-based, but these, the current letters are plywood.
The whole thing is plywood.
Yeah, and the letters are actually cut out of plywood, and a lot of them are delaminating. So this is a composite material, similar to Fippon, and we use, we usually route those using a CNC router, so...
Thomas, will you be making all the letters and stuff?
I will be having the sign shop do the making of the signs, then me and my scouts and volunteers, we will be putting the signs together.
And you'll use our, I mean, we also have files, we have our own font for this too.
Okay.
Which we would like to use, which we'll get to you. It's, our volunteers have made this, is a past president of the American Graphic Design Society, so I believe he created our own font for us.
Perfect, perfect. What we're showing you there is, since this was an Eagle Scout, and these signs have become pretty familiar to people over the years, we've tried to keep the colors and formatting similar to what's there, so it's not a drastic departure from the previous Eagle Scouts work. But we're going to use modern materials.
Nice.
And we'd like to, you know, have a transition that still keeps the flavor of the original and possibly updates the shape. And so we've provided three different options. We can obviously incorporate whatever typeface you choose into any of these, but the wording is slightly different, the layouts and shapes of the signs are slightly different. They're all within the same outer dimensions as the current signs, which are four foot by four foot, so we haven't exceeded that envelope in terms of the dimensions.
Are the current signs white?
They're ivory color, similar to this.
They are, okay.
I mean, some are faded, but they, they were always an ivory color, so that's kind of what we chose. But, you know, we're open to other suggestions, we wanted to share these drawings with you because...
I think these are great, it's a great concept, and I love that you're, you know, using modern materials. The posts are also composite?
We're going to use probably treated, pressure-treated posts, and they're going to be done with a solid stain rather than a paint. Those will probably be sourced from Williams. You know, Sandy is pretty good to the Eagle Scouts and gives them a gift card usually when they're doing an Eagle Scout project, which helps with the fundraising, so...
Did you want us to select an option tonight?
You don't have to select one tonight, we wanted to put it in front of you, if there's some changes you'd like to see, including different typeface choices, we're happy to incorporate them.
No, I just think if we use our font, that'd be great, are you guys okay with that?
Do you guys have a preference over the more traditional?
I know which one I like, which one do you like, Thomas?
Which one do you like?
They're the same amount of work and effort, so, you know, the idea is to collaborate really with the town board and your...
You like the Welcome to the Start?
Yeah, that's the one I like.
I like that you liked it too.
Yeah.
I think you got a simple majority.
I like the third one for it.
Welcome to Rhinebeck?
Yeah.
I could go either way. I like the fact that the 1686 is larger on the two, first and third one, because it shows we're older than the village.
Yeah.
That's important, yeah. Well, I think this is, this is wonderful, should we, should we do it, put it up on our Facebook page and ask presidents to vote? How about that?
Sure.
What do you think? Can you give us a digital, can you send me a JPG of these two-color pages to my supervisor address, and we'll do a community vote?
That's perfect.
Yeah, when did you want to get started on them?
When it's ground laws, but by what the weather is right now, who knows?
So, I have a question. There's three different text styles and so on, also three different shapes. Do the shapes have to be associated with a particular text?
No, everything's interchangeable, so if you like the way one text reads, one says historic, one does not, so the shapes change and the text, and order of the text also tend to change, and it also says Town of Rhinebeck on one of them, I believe. So, you know, you may want to, because the village has their own entrance signs to the village perimeter as well.
But does that change everything?
Does, yeah, that puts option two into play.
And if you like the way that the text reads on one and the shape of another, very easy to come by.
They're all, you know, they're all really great, it's just, it's, you know, they're all winners, so...
I like the one on the right, shake the best, but whatever, why not?
I do, I do too.
It's just simpler.
Yeah, it's the most simple, it's, yep. Well, thank you so much, this is a generous gift, and it's a big achievement for you to have become an Eagle Scout, so we're grateful, and if you send me these files, we'll, I'll look at it. Can we help you at all? Do you sign permits, is that all taken care of?
I've been told that it doesn't require a planning meeting, but we feel that it's important for the board to review and prove the law. The other ques, one of the other scout leaders from, I think it was, Troop, is it Forty-Eight? One Twenty-Eight? Yeah. Have men, I guess the, a troop from One Twenty-Eight did this project in the past, and the Town Highway Department did assist somewhat in terms of, I guess, providing safe access to these areas. We're going to have scouts there.
Yeah, whatever you need.
Some of them are fairly close to the road, so maybe, I don't know if there's an opportunity to work with the Highway Department and scheduling that to have, maybe not a flagger, but maybe just a town vehicle there with some cones.
We could have a flag, whatever you need.
We'd want your flag.
Yeah. I just think that we have to look at the BSA guidelines and ensure that we're not putting any scout in harm's way. Now, my profession is professional sign company, so we have our own staff, and we have our own insurance and all of that stuff, so if he does need assistance with that, our people will help him with the installation. But in terms of getting on to the traffic, maybe traffic control would be helpful.
Sure, we will get Thomas in touch with our designer, and our zoning administrator, and our highway superintendent to make sure we get the support he needs.
And that phase comes later in the process, but it always helps to be proactive about reaching out and establishing a relationship with those individuals and communication throughout the project.
Thomas, is your email address in here too?
I think maybe on the application. If not, I can give it to you. I think he was copied all the communication that was sent out from the planning office.
Why don't you just, why don't you just email me, and then I'll have it.
Okay.
When you send me these, I need them as a JPG, please. Any other questions or comments? Well, this is terrific, thank you, it's very generous, and we'll make the town agree.
Thank you. I also need, and... There is a document that he's required to give to you that basically says what the responsibilities of the board are in engaging as our beneficiary of the Eagle Scout project. It's not complicated, it's this one. I want to give it to town, to you.
I also need a project beneficiary representative, not sure who.
Yeah, we can, we can get that on a later date, but...
It's just like contact information and...
It would be, should be me or the clerk, I think. And whatever you need, or absolutely supportive, so this is very generous, thank you.
It's just an acknowledgement that you've accepted the project, which the BSA requires. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Should we go back to our, we're due to order? I will make a motion for Resolution 2019-069 for our budget transfers and amendments, may I have a second?
You said sixty-nine and sixty-eight?
Correct, sixty-eight. I guess, I guess, Johnson's seconding that.
Yes, exactly.
Is there any discussion, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Tab Two, Resolution 2019-069 for our accounts payables, vouchers three, three, one through four, oh, eight, fifty-five checks totaling ninety-five thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-three cents, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ed, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2019-070, it's for our capital projects abstracts, it's two checks totaling sixteen thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars and forty-one cents, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Johnson. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. I would like a motion for Resolution 2019-071 to hire our Jessica Morgan as our part-time highway secretary.
Motion.
So moved, Alan, and second? Ed, thank you. Any discussion?
Yes. I'm assuming the Secretary of Maintenance Secretary.
Yes, yep. I have this six-month probationary period after which the hourly salary goes up, do we always do it that long?
I'm not, I don't know.
Okay, well, let's approve this, I'll check with Shelley, and, you know, we're moving up our hourly range, so it seems like a long time.
Yeah, if, I think if Barry wants to up it, we should up.
Okay, let's approve it as is, and we can revisit it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2019-072 for a brush drop off, may I have brush drop off? May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Johnson, thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion? This is for hiring John Kilmer for our twenty-nineteen season at the old transfer station. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2019-073 is a revision of our town board liaison appointments, and we've just left what Brennan had as unassigned for now, and certainly, you know, we can all oversee it or share it around. Is there any discussion or any further amendment of this? Oh, I need a motion.
Motion.
Thank you, Johnson. Thank you, Alan. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. I need a motion for Resolution 2019-074 to appoint Evelyn Barton, who also had her hat in the ring for, we get a lot of engaged people from that, that's great, for appointment to the Conservation Advisory Board, may I have a motion, Ed? Thank you, Ed, may I have a second? Thank you. Who is that, Alan? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? So moved. We had six people come forward to be appointed as county legislator, and we have three people who are already getting involved with local government, so it was a good thing, yep, thanks for doing that, Ed. Resolution 2019-075, I will make a motion for the use of town hall by the Dutchess County Board of Elections for early voting, may I have a second? Thank you, Ed. You know, we went back and forth with some emails on this, and it'll be handled just like it's handled with all elections. We're one of six or five super sites, along with Millbrook Firehouse, Dutchess County Board of Elections, Uniondale Town Hall, and Fishkill Town Hall. Early voting has come to New York, and there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine days that people will be able to vote in advance of Election Day, and the Board of Elections staff will be, you know, pop, working the site and in charge of all of our equipment and opening and closing like they always do, and what else? I think that's it, the days are all free and are on hold, they don't conflict with any of our board meetings, so. Any further discussion?
Do we have a storage bin for them to lock their stuff up?
That is up to them to supply.
Oh, okay. Got it, got it.
We are not in charge of the Board of Elections equipment. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. I'd like a motion for Resolution 2019-076 for our summer twenty-nineteen Recreation Department hires.
Motion.
Thank you, Alan, may I have a second? Thanks, Johnson. Is there any discussion?
There are a couple of changes.
Okay, you want to make a...
I move to modify number fifteen.
May I have a second on the modifying?
Let me tell you what it is.
Well, we had to bring it to the board, modifies.
Okay, okay.
Thanks, go ahead.
Number fifteen is not going to be a counselor, it's going to be a counselor in training.
CIT.
And it's unpaid.
Okay.
And the, the second one is, we're adding Iris H O E Y dash W A S L W, O E Wasso, as a counselor, oh, I'm sorry, as a CIT, and then also...
I'm sorry, Iris Holly Rosso?
Yeah, W A S O W. And we're adding Raphael O'Connor as a, as a returning counselor at fifteen dollars an hour, I'm sorry, twelve dollars an hour.
Okay.
So we have fifteen counselors altogether.
Fifteen counselors and two CITs?
Yes, and number two, Assistant Camp Director is Samantha McLaughlin, as opposed to what's there, so that's changed as well. Other than that, everything's the same as it was.
Do you have all the changes? Okay, great. All in favor of the modifications?
Aye.
Aye, and we have the open motion on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved, thanks, Alan.
Okay, thank the way.
Well, you know, it's season three, and you can see that when we have staff that are here and paid correctly, and they stay and they come back, that things get easier, they're not being like the wheel over there. So every year this gets better.
Yeah, I'm very pleased with the people we got, plus the ease with which we got them.
As am I, and I think it says a lot to, you know, keeping staff well-paid and coming back because they just get better at their job. They are our best resource. Resolution 2019-077, Recreation Department invoices, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Alan, may I have a second? Thank you, Johnson.
This is the lifeguard training.
Yep.
That we, that we all agree we're going to pay for, for the lifeguards.
And they get, they have to pay us back out of their last paycheck if they don't stay the whole summer. This is a good policy. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Did, Alan, you, all in favor?
Yeah, I said aye, I'm sorry.
Okay, there are no opposed. Okay, you just, okay.
I just, I just noticed that there's attached to this is a PCA proposal.
I saw that, yeah.
Well, let's just say that we've passed the resolution for the... I'm sorry. It's not only for that, it is for the Wi-Fi coverage to the building. So there are invoices. The invoices is for the lifeguard training and the Wi-Fi.
And I exercised PCA on this and I'm satisfied that this is the first one.
I followed very many emails on it, so it sounds good.
I tried to avoid having extended Wi-Fi, but there's no way.
We need to, yeah. Okay. Still everybody all in favor of everything? I think we voted on it. Okay.
Now you know what you voted for.
Motion, Resolution 2019-078, awarding bid for painting of town hall. May I have a motion, Ed? Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. We are awarding this bid to Tony Boe, painting and wallpapering, as he is the lowest bid for the job. Great. Any discussion? When is he going to start?
I wanted to talk to the child aid company, $2,288 that was for tax natural, that's not something that pays.
Yeah, with tax exempt.
So the company is after $28,000, but they still...
Okay. And they bid for the same thing. Is Tony doing the color matching on the ceiling, not the whole ceiling?
Color matching, yes.
Okay. Okay, and we need to pick colors, which I have a colorist working on, so I'll deliver that. Is there, did we vote on, we voted on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2019-079, attendance of the dog control officer at the Conference of the Gilderland Animal Control Unit in the York State Department of Agriculture. May I have a motion? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. So that's Ed and Alan.
Ed and Chauncey.
Oh, Ed and Chauncey.
As the former dog and Gilderland liaison executive.
Yeah, precedent.
Is this for our deputy dog control officer or... Okay, so this should say, does it matter?
Actually, on the list, I think the dog control officer is one of the specs, so it really isn't a deputy.
Okay. All right, great. So it doesn't matter then? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Apropos that, we just, we had a, which I forwarded to Ed, a complaint. And what we've done on our town website is we've, we have both Stephanie and Roger on there with the times when they're covering the town. We have 24-hour, 365-day-a-year coverage now, so it's being covered by two different people. Resolution 2019-080, merchant agreement for acceptance of credit cards for town car and tax collector. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chauncey. I think that we had given this to an outside company. They were very, very difficult to get in touch with and we discovered that our bank, M&amp;T, offers the same service. And since they're right there and answer our phone calls all the time, we're giving them the business.
That's good.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Then...
We need a vote on 81.
What's 81? Oh, okay. You're right. Resolution 2019-081, yeah? Did we motion?
It's motioned, yes.
We did motion it, yes. It was Ed and Chauncey. So it's been motioned, it's on the table. We left it there. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Thanks, John. I just have one piece of new business that we have a discussion item. The village has asked me to send out a letter to town residents asking them caution. I had it, I lost it. Town is, the village is working with a professor at Maris College to study the landsman kill and its tributaries. And this class is going to be looking at when it floods so that the town, the village can be prepared to let out water from Crystal Lake and what we could do to mitigate possible flooding. So this letter is just asking for town residents to let the professor and his students be in touch with them to get access to their land so they could study the existing physical conditions of a landsman kill. There are several town houses...
Get access to Crystal Lake?
No, this is to town residents whose land abuts the landsman kill.
Oh, I'm sorry. Right, right.
I don't know that I need your permission. I just wanted to let you know that the mayor's asking to do it. If you guys agree, I'd like to send the letter out. Give them the letter so they can send it out. Okay. We also have a discussion item of investing with New York Class. And New York Class is, it was started years ago with NBIA and now is its own business. And I sent this out to you guys. What New York Class is, is a cooperative liquid asset security system. It's a short-term, highly liquid investment strategy that's used by governments. So instead of us keeping our money in a bank where we get almost nothing, we could be getting around 2% interest. So if you guys, this could be another $20,000 a year for us, which for a small town is a windfall.
Sure.
It's accredited, it's very secure, it's professionally managed. I don't know if you are all aware, there's many towns in Dutchess County municipalities already invest with this. Joe Friedman is happy to come and talk to us. Familiar with this. I don't know if you are, if you want to read on it more. But if so, I'd like to put a motion forward for our next town board meeting that we set this up so that we can have our money there.
Is it insured?
Yes. I sent you guys out all of this information, so read it if you want to. And there's also a what would you have yielded if you were with us? The interest rates over the past year have gone from about 2 1/4 to 2.28. Yeah.
That's still good for a little bit.
Oh, it's great.
It's very good, yeah.
It's great. Okay, I think that's all.
I have a motion.
Oh, great.
The Landsman Kill Trail Association has made a request to use the road that goes to the landfill. I'm sorry, to the... At least to the dump, you know.
The capped, the capped landfill?
Yeah.
Yes?
They're having an event on Sunday, May 19th. They would like to use the road for parking. The place they've been using has, was, is no longer available because the property's for sale and they don't want to...
Why don't they use our, our parking at our town park instead of there? Is it adequate for parking? Has it been plowed and would they interfere at all with the cap? I don't know what they think of that.
No, she's just going to use the road.
Okay, is it plowed? Do they need it to be plowed? Just make sure Bobby...
No, it's in May.
Okay, just make sure Bobby knows about it.
Yeah, I will. I spoke to Barry, he's fine with this.
Okay.
So, you know about this?
What's the event?
It's a trail run.
Oh, a trail run?
Yeah, yeah, with horses.
But they're not going over the property?
No.
Okay.
This is just to park the vehicles and the trailers that bring the horses into that area. And they're going to, they're basically have trails through private property that they have permission to use that, it's called, the event is called the Spring Hunter Pace.
Fine with me, you guys?
Yeah, so this resolution basically approves the use of the road provided they give us this insurance certificate that will leave us a liability, which they will have to do.
Okay. Are you asking us to pass the resolution?
I'd like you to pass the resolution.
You want to introduce it?
Okay, so it's, I'll read it. Whereas the Landsman Kill Trail Association is producing an equestrian event, all the Spring Hunter Pace on Sunday, May 19th, 2019. And whereas the parking area they previously had used for the event can no longer be used. And whereas they have requested to use the town road leading to the dump for parking vehicles and trailers during the event, resolve. The town approves the use of the requested road for parking provided that the Landsman Kill Trail Association provides insurance with acceptable protection from any liability for the town of Rhinebeck. And that's my motion.
Second. Ed? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? So moved.
John, I have a thing with that.
I would like the motion to go into executive session.
Before you do, could I make my little report on pickleball?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to let you know that, as you know, pickleball is the fastest-growing game in the country. Scaled-down version of tennis, to put it simply. Did you know that?
You know, what if you're two people playing, four people play?
Oh...
We always play doubles because nobody is of an age to play synchos in these groups. I play in two of them. It's growing really rapidly. I played in a group in Red Hook that's doubled in size in two years.
And it's less, it's easier to smaller court than tennis?
It's, you can put three pickleball courts crosswise on a tennis court. It gives you some sense of the size of it. It's played with a paddle instead of a strong racket and with a plastic pickleball instead of a tennis ball. And it is said that it is a combination of tennis ping pong and badminton. And I think it's really scaled-down tennis with a lot of different rules. Anyway, it's growing very rapidly. It's becoming really popular. And I've been getting inquiries from people in the two groups in which I play, one here and one in Red Hook. The one here being at the Tony Mars Center. They've laid out a pickleball court on the tennis, they're in their tennis court. Can we do more about pickleball in Rhinebeck? So I met last Thursday with the school superintendent, Joe Phalen, because I had learned that pickleball is played in at least one of the gymnasia in, at the high school, high school, middle school. And it is so. They have laid out eight pickleball courts on an oversized gym that they have in the middle school. And I met with Joe Phalen about the possibility of doing something there starting in the fall to make space available for pickleball for town and village people. And he's very happy to have us do it. There won't be a charge. We'll have to run it ourselves, which of course will not be a problem. We'll make those arrangements. So I just wanted to let you know that I don't have a lot of details worked out yet. I just had the meeting and I just found out it's feasible.
You should add it to the recreation website.
Oh, good idea, yeah. And I'll talk to Elaine about it.
Talk to Elaine because we could use MyRec to enroll people in playing there. I assume we have a league or something?
Well, the two groups in which I play are really informal. We just show up and we play and we rotate and it's very relaxed. We don't have a league, but that's been mentioned. One other person has said something about putting a league together. This is going to become a much bigger deal for active seniors. It's just growing like crazy. And that's who it's for, really. The game was developed in the 60s for children, but we felt they're kind of taking it over. So anyway, there'll be more as I work on the details and start to get it set up. I'll keep you posted.
Okay. Cool.
Now you've all got to start coming out and you've got to play. You don't have to have played a lot of tennis or anything. It's a very easy game to pick up. It really is.
I play things, yeah.
It's like a lot of things. It's easy to do, but it's hard to be good at.
Thanks for doing that. So you'll let Elaine down and we'll...
I will, I'll talk to her.
You know, I was going to ask for an executive session and I'm not ready for it, so it was to do with a particular employee and reimbursement, but let me, I need to do some work on it. Is there any other discussions or new business or any public comment on any non-agenda items or any agenda items or anything? No? How about a motion to...
A motion.
Second adjourned.
Second, adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good night. See you in a couple weeks.